This is the August 4th Special Emergency Meeting of the Revere City Council. All rise and salute the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Rigo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselfsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Patch is absent, Councilor Penta.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Riordan is absent, and Council President Zamburdo.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Counsel item number one, communication from the mayor requesting the acceptance and approval of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31, relative to expenditures in excess of appropriations.
Mr. Mayor, welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and to members of the council, thank you very much. I know this was an unscheduled meeting, and I appreciate all of you making this meeting here tonight, that we need to move forward to pay for a lot of expenses above and beyond what we budgeted for. And this is obviously a special chapter that the Department of Revenue allows us to operate under while we wait for insurance reimbursements and any other reimbursements that the city may be eligible for. And I think it's worth noting that while a lot of assertions have been made that we're receiving no funding from here, no funding from there, today we just received, or we just received an email that we were copied on, that the governor is requesting SBA to step in and allow for SBA assistance to the city. So there will be assistance in other pockets of revenues that the city may be able to tap into, in addition to our own insurance that we have here in our public buildings. But, you know, clearly, and I'll go over, and I think pretty much all of you know by virtue of the description in the letter that's attached to the motion here tonight, what we're asking for, and I'm certainly prepared to answer any questions, and our Director of Finance is here to answer questions as well. But I'd like to take this opportunity, considering it was only a week ago, that a very unexpected tornado came through the city of Revere. It still strikes me a week later as being surreal somewhat, that, you know, the fact that a tornado could come down Broadway-Revere, just absolutely amazing. And what's even more amazing, and I've said this, and I know many of you have said this, that nobody was killed, and nobody was even seriously injured. It's amazing, and it's a blessing. But we still are dealing with a lot of issues, and I just want to touch on a couple of them. But before I touch on the issues that we're dealing with, I want to just publicly thank, and I suspect some of you may want to, but I need to publicly thank many, many different people, and I know I'm going to leave some out, but I just want to thank certainly our neighbors, our surrounding neighbors, from as far away as Springfield and Gloucester, virtually the entire. We had neighbors around Revere that were so supportive of our city during those days, the day of the storm and immediately following. It was incredible, the amount of support we received. National Grid, Verizon, Comcast did incredible work. Our own Public Works Department, Fire Department, Police Department, Inspection Services did incredible work. When you look at City Hall and think, and I don't know if any of you were here in the building during that time or shortly after, but, you know, when you look around City Hall, or if you looked around City Hall in the minutes and hours after the storm hit, it's amazing that none of our own workforce got seriously injured. I know our Director of Finance, George Anzoni's office, when I went into his office about a half an hour after the storm hit, there was probably two inches of debris on every inch of the floor in his office. The windows were all blown out, and not only were the windows blown out in the outside of the building, but the MIS windows where we store our servers, that window was blown out. And to think that none of George's staff was seriously hurt is just amazing. I mean, there was definitely somebody looking out for us. A number of church groups, charitable organizations, civic groups, the Red Cross, obviously, Salvation Army, Team Rubicon that maybe some of you saw. They're a group of veterans and first responders that spent Saturday and Sunday here, helping clean up neighbors that really needed it. Just an incredible thing to watch, and really neighbor helping neighbor. It was, I think I shared the story with you, but the American Red Cross was set up at the Remni-Mash School that we had, that we had set up as a temporary shelter. We thought people would need shelter that were displaced and couldn't go back into their homes. And they couldn't, they went there, but, you know, they had no takers. Everybody was apparently moving in with family and friends or neighbors or whatever they were doing, but they weren't going to the Remni-Mash School. So they went out into the neighborhoods that were most impacted, and when I talked to them the next day, they said they, in all the years that they've responded to these types of crises around the state and around the country, they had never seen the level of compassion and support that our neighbors had for one another. And, you know, you can't help but feel good when you hear comments like that. I mean, the attitudes of our residents have been incredible. I couldn't have asked for any more. We set up a tornado relief fund, and for those that aren't aware of it, it's, if you go to reveredtornadorelief.org, you can contribute to the fund. Today, I had a young girl, I think she was eight or nine years old, from Millis, Massachusetts, that set up an iced tea stand and drove here from Millis to deliver $50 for the victims that suffered losses. And, you know, if that doesn't resonate, I don't know what will. I mean, people around the Commonwealth, and really right here in Revere, are very, very supportive of those people who were victimized as a result of the storm. There will be, there's been some questions, what can that money be used for, and there is going to be an awful lot of needs. I just had to sign off today for another few days for family that's over at the Comfort Inn. The Comfort Inn has been very supportive in offering rooms for people, but they obviously, they can't donate an awful lot of rooms to people, so there are some costs associated with that. I know Capic has taken money that they have available and are trying to help people with shelter. The Prospect House has reached out to the city, offering shelter for people that need it. But I know that these aren't going to last forever, and nor will the city have to support these people forever. But until we can get them more long-term options, many of these people won't be able to return to their homes for seven, eight, nine months. And so if they don't have insurance to cover those costs, hopefully the money that is put into this fund will be able to help the people who need it. We know there's a lot of people that I talked about, that, for example, Team Rubicon helped out over Saturday and Sunday, cleaning up their yards. A lot of these costs that are associated with cleanup are not typically covered by insurance. So that's money that people have to take out of their pockets. As a coastal community, and maybe even some of you have this, there's not a dollar deductible, but it's a percentage deductible, and it's a win deductible because we're a coastal community. And a lot of people don't have a set deductible, whether it be 500 or 1,000. They'll have a 1%, 2%, 3%. Some homeowner policies will go all the way up to 7% deductible. So if you've got 300, you know, let's say $200,000 of coverage, you're anywhere between a $2,000 deductible and a $14,000 deductible. So there'll be people that are going to have some serious gaps in coverage that we're hoping we'll be able to help again with the proceeds of this fund. So with that, I just want to thank all of you. I know the city council was very active during this last week, this very difficult week. But I know that, you know, most of you have been in and out of my office, asking questions, asking for help for neighbors, for other residents across the city. I want to thank you for that, because quite honestly, it helped us to have another sets of eyes. We obviously can't be everywhere, but you were very helpful in that process. So with that, as far as the motion goes, I know you're all here, and as I say, I'm willing to answer questions, but the letter hopefully was self-explanatory. I don't want to bore you and go through the letter, but again, it's just giving us permission to spend funds, you know, prior to receiving any reimbursements, okay? And if there were unreimbursable costs to the city, that won't, we can push that off to 2016. It will not show up in our 2015 budget or tax rate, okay? So again, Mr. President, members of the council, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Certainly, the mayor alluded to all the individuals and branches of government that serve our community, but he forgot to mention him and his staff for the unbelievable effort that he himself was leading his staff to aid all of these citizens within our community that really needed this help at this particular time. Devastation, when I was on site within 15 minutes in, I saw what was taking place, and I couldn't believe what I saw. I've served this city for several years and have never seen anything like it. My heart sunk when I saw all these old, old trees all crumbled over and torn to pieces. I was taken back when I walked into a property on Broadway and saw inside what it looked like. Outside, it looked like a lot of blown windows blown in, and obviously fascia board hanging, siding hanging. But when you went inside and saw all this glass debris thrown about, and all the plants and everything else that was within the home, all thrown all over the place, you saw and got the picture of what took place. It was just a drastic thing that occurred in our community, and I thank God that no one was seriously hurt. But again, we sit in the same council chamber that we were in last Monday, and we see a week from then what took place within our community. What an effort that was put forward to help our citizens who are in dire need. And it all, again, it stemmed from a great community fabric. We know we have a great fire department. We know we have a great police staff, and we also know now to the person that we have a wonderful DPW group of guys and ladies that went out and helped each and every person that they could. And then we had Inspection Services going in and inspecting and doing things that they do. It was just an unbelievable community effort, and I want to thank the city council for taking part, as the mayor alluded to, that, doing the little bit that you could do to, that we could go collectively and help our citizens within our community that were really in need of help. But I just, the attitude and the persistence of the will of the people was something to admire, and it's something that you can think back on for many, many years and say, wow, I lived through a tornado, nobody was killed, and the great people of Revere came together in a united fashion. So again, Mr. Mayor, thank you and your staff. I call you the guy, the ever-ready battery. I don't know how the heck you do it. I mean, I just don't know how you do it. But when we have a moment, you can tell me a secret, because it really works, and you certainly have a lot of energy in that. More power to you. It's a wonderful job that you and your staff did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council Guanasso. Before I call on anybody else, I just want to recognize the, obviously, the head of our emergency services disaster team, Chief Gene Doherty is here tonight, and also our financial director, George Anzoni. Council Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I don't want to be redundant, but Council Guanasso basically said all in a nutshell. I mean, if the city came together, and, you know, under your leadership, may show true leadership, and it's something that probably never expected. And I know, you know, when you write in, men are right here tonight, that we're lucky to have someone like him that's been involved in disasters in the country. I know you've been to California fires and other things, you know, the fire chief has, and, you know, scene diversity and every disaster it probably was, and we're lucky to have him there with us, and, you know. But then you even look at departments like the DPW. You know, the day of the storm, if you went down Broadway, the next day you went down, you'd probably say, what are they talking about? Except for a few roofs moving off of cars. But, I mean, how that was cleaned up was unbelievable. And, you know, your DPW staff, then you go to the police department, you know, roaming the neighborhoods at night, making sure people's houses weren't robbed that couldn't get in their homes. And I think it was a team effort, and, you know, usually when you're the captain, you have a strong captain at the helm, which I consider you a strong captain, that, you know, you brought a lot of forces together, outside forces. And I know you haven't stopped yet. And the main thing with this is a lot of work has been done, but there's still people out there that need a, you know, a hand up, and I think that's with the relief fund and, you know, other stuff that's going to be hopefully coming in in the future. I know you talked, I was in your office with Senator Petraselli and Leo, and they're going to, when they get back in session, try to get some money for this relief fund from the state. You know, hopefully the federal government can pitch, and for whatever reason, they're not stepping up to the plate, that's beyond me. But I want to thank you for your leadership. And like you said, the people of Revere, I mean, it's, you know, seeing them come together and it was amazing, the attitudes that they had. It wasn't looking to point a finger or say, this happened, that happened, it was just how can they help? And their homes were, you know, disarrayed and everything else. So, I mean, I think it was a great, I mean, sometimes something good comes out of it. It's double-edged sword saying that, but, I mean, yeah, because, you know, some of our homes weren't affected, and these people are still feeling it every day. But, I mean, I don't think anybody could expect it anymore of you or the city, but, you know, the effort they put forth. With that, Mr. President, I just want to thank you again, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council Penta. Council Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not going to belabor this meeting by throwing more accolades around. They're all well-deserving. I know the mayor and his entire staff and the citizens of this city came right to the forefront with regard to the horrendous event we had last Monday. I think the best thing we can do this evening is to, the best accolade we can throw out there was to approve the mayor's request so we can continue to work effectively to get the balance of this city cleaned up, the balance of the tornado cleaned up, and get people back in their homes and get the streets of our city cleaned. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Powers. Council Janino.
Thank you. I think a lot of my colleagues have said a lot of the things that I wanted to say. You know, we're very lucky to have our mayor and his fantastic team that, this really has been a team effort, so I want to thank you. And I think everyone knows how wonderful our police and fire departments are in our DPW. But something a lot of people don't realize is how small our departments are for the size of the city we have. So for our fire departments who are doing over 100 calls that day, and for our police department to not even know how many calls were done that day, and for our DPW to literally have every body they have on the streets, it's a phenomenal feat, so we can't thank them enough for that. But I think one group that we're missing to thank in this whole ordeal is really our community. Something that the Red Cross said when they were here is they've never seen neighbors the way they have in our community. And this truly has been something, as awful as it was, that I think brought the neighborhoods a lot closer together. So, you know, thank you to the people that wanted your neighbor's yard and helped them move trees, and thank you to the people that called us when lines were down. And thank you to all the local businesses who are out there. You know, when I went down Broadway that afternoon, it was all local businesses. You saw the Hills, you saw the Macario Brothers, you saw Action and GJ and probably 15 other local businesses that I'm forgetting about right now. But, you know, this was a real Revere effort, and we really pulled together when we had to. So thank you for everything that you did, and, you know, it's a learning process. I don't think any of us expected to ever face this issue. You know, we've had snowstorms, we've had blizzards, we've had, you know, awful issues with the ocean tides, but this isn't something I think any of us would ever see hit Revere. So thank you for being patient with us while we get through it, and we'll continue to figure it out. And I think, like Council Powers said, putting this through would be the best way to really help continue, so thank you.
Thank you, Council Janino. Council Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, through you, I'd like to thank the mayor for all the work that you and your staff have done over the last week. And to kind of touch on the idea of our public employees, they really stepped up to the plate. I mean, it's a tremendous effort by everybody. I think everyone pitched in, and as Council Janino noted, how the fabric of our community was really tested, and we passed that test in my estimation. One thing that was interesting was that, you know, my sister lives on Tapley Ave, and I went down to check out the backyard, and she had some issues. And we took a walk around the neighborhood, and I haven't done that in a long time, just in terms of seeing as many people out, talking to people, helping people out. It was really, you know, for as terrible as the circumstances were, it was kind of a heartfelt moment where you saw people really helping each other out. And it was extraordinary, and I want to thank you for your hard work. I know you guys barely slept over the last week, and it's a testament to the hard work that all of, you know, the city employees do. One kind of question I have about this is that I'm assuming that some of this money is going to be for tree service or some of the work that's been done. Are we going to have kind of a check on the work that's done to make sure that we're paying people for work that was actually done? I just don't want to get in where it's an issue or where it's a circumstance that there are predatory folks out there, and there might be people who come up with fake bills for tree service. I just want to make sure that we are, there's a check on the amount of money that's being paid out to any vendors. I know, we know a lot of the vendors. We also, I think there were some vendors that kind of came out from, maybe out of the woodwork. And I just want to make sure that there's a check on any bills that are being submitted or any payments that are being made out to vendors. Is there going to be a system to be able to do that, or, you know, I just wonder, I just don't want to be paying bills just because we get them, and I want to make sure that the work's being done.
Yeah, I mean, that makes two of us. Neither do I. I wouldn't want to pay somebody for services that we really, that we actually didn't receive. So we had a meeting here in City Hall with our department heads last Thursday morning, and, you know, we brought all of our department heads in that would be involved with losses in their particular areas. We had Diane Kelly here from the school department. We had Steve Fielding here from the senior center. We had, we had the fire chief here, because as you may know, the, you know, our central fire station sustained damage. Our whole finance team was here, George Anzoni, Laurie Giudella, Marisa Landy, Paul Capizzi. And we all went over the process and procedures on how invoices were going to be taken in and then processed. So these claims are all going to be, you know, obviously we want to pay them in a timely manner. These vendors and people involved in the immediate response came out in a timely manner, and we want to pay them in a timely manner, which is kind of why I'm looking for your approval on this. But we don't want to pay people for work that they didn't do. So all of those invoices, wherever they're going to be coming from, whichever department, you know, whoever's overseeing that particular part is going to be reviewed by that department head and then submitted to the finance team, who will in turn approve or question the appropriate invoice, whatever that might be. So, you know, it's going to be a work in progress. We're still identifying problems that have taken a week to identify. So because, you know, you walk in a side room and, oh geez, there's a leak over here, you know? It's, you know, because it, you know, it was just that type of storm, but we are absolutely looking at that. And we've got a public adjusting firm, they're the largest firm in New England, Swirling, Milton &amp; Winnick, that is our public adjuster here for our municipal buildings. I think there's eight buildings in total that sustain damage. So we're making sure that whatever damage has been done is identified, and then working with our insurance carrier to make sure that we get as much insurance coverage as we're entitled to, so that we can repair these buildings as quickly as we can.
And is it, is this, are the, the money that will be spent due to the passing, that's, will it be mostly towards the public buildings, or is it for things like tree service or any, it could be anything, right?
All those things. All those things. Emergency repairs. We won't do any, we won't do any long-term permanent repair payments out of this. You know, although I wouldn't 100% rule it out. I mean, if we know we're going to get reimbursed on insurance and, you know, a contractor needs X to get started, we don't want to leave the windows boarded up on these buildings for long either. The senior center, I think, is still closed because of the damage that they've sustained there. We obviously want to get that open as quickly as possible. So, you know, this just gives us the ability to make whatever repairs are needed, reimburse contractors that have already done work for the city, that are expecting payment, with the full knowledge that we're still working on it. I think somebody, I'm not sure, somebody had alluded to the fact we're working with our state delegation. They have been extremely supportive through this process. In fact, the day the tornado hit, the speaker was out here, Senator Petraselli was out here, Representative Vincent was out here, the governor obviously was out here, Secretary Bylekki was out here. We had a lot of people respond and offer support, and they continue to offer support. As I say, the governor just sent a letter to the SBA requesting assistance, and I believe that's going to come to fruition. And the, our state delegation has indicated that there's a strong appetite in the legislature to help the citizens that were impacted by the storm. So once we have some hard costs as to what the city has had to sustain, we'll be able to provide that information back to the legislature and see if there can be some sort of a budget amendment at some point. So, you know, we're, we don't, we certainly want to make sure that, you know, that we're getting paid every nickel that we're entitled to, while trying to get the city back on track at the same time. And by the way, I think it also bears noting, the, you know, the whole notion of paying bills may be that we shouldn't be paying for some reason or other, somebody's trying to get over on the city or something. We should, you know, we've tried to put that word out to the public. They should really vet any contractors that they use to try, you know, who are offering to make repairs to their homes. Make sure that they're reputable contractors. If they have any questions, they can certainly call us, and we can try to guide them through that process. But, you know, make sure, because unfortunately, in a storm like this, we've already had incidents that fortunately we've been able to address, but people will try to take advantage of people during a storm like this, so.
And just one other question. Do we have, are we keeping a running total of how much we figure these repairs are going to cost? Or how much, how much we figure we've spent or we're going to have to spend on tree removal and stuff like that?
Yeah, I mean, I've checked in, I mean, I've got a ballpark figure. For example, on tree removal, I know we're exceeding a half a million dollars right now. But again, that number could go up too.
Right.
So we're just, you know, what concerns me right now, you know, obviously we've cleared our primary and secondary roads, but as I drive around the city, I see a lot of standing trees with loose branches, and that can be a danger too. So I'm hopeful that our Public Works Department is traveling around, and I've asked the general public to look and see if they see any, you know, limbs that look like they're hanging and maybe ready to fall, you know, please make sure that they address that, okay?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Rigo. Council Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Lots been said so far, and I agree with every single point that was made. On my personal note, that day, you know, we were sitting down the bagel bin curing all the cures of the city and the world, and one of our DPW workers came in and told us that a tree was down on American Legion Highway, but we had no clue how vast it was beyond that one tree. You know, we were saying it was a burst and that it was something simple that just happened. You know, we were saying that it was a burst, and that it was something simple that just happened. But then I couldn't get hold of my son. I couldn't get hold of my granddaughter, who happened to be at the high school. There was no cellphone service. So, of course, you're getting nervous, and so I got in my car. I did a few errands, not realizing again, but I made my way up to the high school. The sun had come out already. And thank God, they were walking out of the building, and they had moved all the kids at the camp and all the workers into the center of the building to protect them as much as possible, even though we got those alerts. "Tornado, take cover," and it was in capital N-O-W, "now," but it had already passed. But they said, "You should see what's going on, going on around the high school." So, I went around the back on the Mountain Ave side, East Mountain Ave side. Trees were down everywhere. Couldn't get down East Mountain Ave. Couldn't get down Mountain Ave towards Rite Aid. The trees were totaled across the road. I've been through the blizzard of '78. I remember Hurricane Carol in 1959, when it destroyed what, you know, Shirley Ave area and ripped the sides of buildings off. But I had never in my life, with no snow around or rain like it was, seen the devastation that I saw as I went down School Street, went down Eastern Ave. Now, here I am, I'm a Shirley Ave guy, and I always will be, but I was concerned about my friends. What one, what three, what four, what five, I croaked. You know, Counselor Patch and I were, if you want to say lucky, yeah, we were that there was no damage in our neighborhoods. But going down Broadway, and thank God, the people, and we're talking about the people. We had people, the school crossing guards, put on their vests at Cushman Ave and wouldn't let anybody down Broadway on their own. Nobody asked them. They wanted to make sure Broadway can get cleared and everybody was safe. That's the type of stuff that we saw. We saw neighbors, I went down Eastern Ave, and I saw the neighbors already cutting down, cutting trees off the front of houses. Al Terminello's house. I mean, every tree around that house collapsed right into their property, in front of the house, on cars. And then when I walked in front of the Legion and saw the way the trees were there, it broke my heart. I know we strive on growing trees in Revere. That's one of our things. We want to see trees. And now, we look bare. We look bare, and I'm sure we're going to come through, Mr. Mayor. And again, and I'll repeat, thanks to you and your staff. The chief did an outstanding job. He always has over the years. But he, his true colors really showed up on this one, as did yours, Mr. Mayor, and your staff. And everybody connected. I bet you I saw nine to 10 tree companies in this city within an hour. And we were, in a sense, we were kind of lucky that we were the only ones that got affected by this, where all these tree companies can come in and do their job and clean up as quickly as they could. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, you know, I implore, I implore my colleagues to vote this out. Let the, let the city and the mayor and Mr. Anzoni do what they have to do to make us go forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Nowosowski. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Danny, I want to, again, congratulate you and your staff, okay? I don't want to be redundant, name everyone. But again, I would like to make special acknowledgement to our chief, okay? The chief is unbelievable. He runs a tight ship, and he's been in it planning, planning, planning. This is what it's all about, working together. The last time we really worked this hard in the citizens was the blizzard of 1978. It only affected a small section of the city, but all those people work hand in hand. And again, congratulations to you, your staff, and to Fire Chief. Moving along, on Broadway, I noticed that from Peter Womb's up, it's, it's roped off. Does that mean those bills are unsafe?
Exactly.
Oh, really?
So, so you're talking about from Park Ave up to the Revere House of P. T.?
Right.
Yeah, we, I've been in communication over the weekend and today with our building inspector, Benny DiChristoforo. And as soon as he gets a letter from their structural engineer stating that the building is safe for people to return, we will gladly allow employees, the owners of those businesses, and the general public to go back inside. But until then, you know, we all have to be, you know, our concern, you know, the concern for the, you know, well-being and safety of our, of the general public is paramount. And we will not allow anybody to occupy those buildings if they're considered unsafe. And right now, that seems to be the case. I mean, clearly, in the back of the building, on the Park Ave side, there's a whole section that's been ripped out. But I've been told, and again, I don't have confirmation on this, but I've been told that that entire roof lifted, and that actually, both walls are bowed. Now, maybe they're not bowed to the, to the human eye, but I've been told that there is some structural concerns there. And as soon as we get documentation back from a licensed structural engineer that those buildings are safe to be occupied again, clearly, we will take all of those barriers out. But for now, it just simply is not safe. And, you know, I know what it's like. You were a private business owner, as was I. And so, you want to let people get back to work, but not at the risk of having somebody get injured, whether it's the employees themselves or any, or any, any, any members of the public.
Absolutely. I was, matter of fact, I had just left the bagel bin, went up to Fenley Street, and all of a sudden, my, you can see the rain starting real heavy. And my grandson came in like this, okay? So, I grabbed him, and I grabbed the other youngster, and all of a sudden, the front door goes off, okay? We're all fortunate. That's, that's not, that's minor, minor damage. When I look at some of the devastation that's taken place down in the various areas in Broadway, it's amazing, you know? But again, congratulations to you as mayor, and also, your staff and Chief Dougherty.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, like, you think about your door being ripped off, and all of those various missiles that were flying through the air. It's miraculous that nobody was seriously injured or even killed.
Absolutely.
It's amazing. I saw down on Tap Street in the back of one of the houses, I was down on the Parkway, and there was a tree limb. It must have been probably that, that, that thick around that had impaired the back of a house and was just sticking out of the back of the house. It's just amazing, you know, the devastation, the hood of a vehicle up in a tree on Central Ave. I mean, just incredible that nobody, at 9:30 in the morning on a Monday, suffered any serious injuries. It's incredible. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. Counselor Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to start off by saying, thanking everyone who contributed. It's a long list of people, and I think everyone played their part in a time when everyone was in need. And a lot of people, they look at a city when a, when something devastating happens and look at the leadership. And I commend Chief Dougherty and our mayor for the leadership, as everyone else up here did tonight. You always, you know, have these thoughts in your mind once in a while. What if something occurred here, an earthquake? How would we respond? And what was going through my mind is, we responded so quickly as a city, and the mayor and the chief, they just took the bull by the horn and really showed their leadership skills. And I applaud you. I really do. But more importantly, our citizens, they endured the storm, the damage to their house, and I applaud them for their patience and their strength through this whole devastation. I have one more question, I have one question, Mr. Mayor. I know Counselor Rigo touched on replacement, tree removal, and damage cost. What about tree replacements? Are we looking into funding for that? Are we just going to leave it as is?
Oh, absolutely. There's no question. You know, we lost well over 200 trees that I think we're responsible for, right, Chief? You know, so, yeah, so, city trees. So, over 250 now. And, you know, we're working on some local businesses. I'd rather not say who, only because if they don't come through, I don't want to, you know, put them in a position. But we had one institution make an offer, they're running it up the flagpole now, but they made an offer to the city of providing 200 trees. So, that would be 200 trees that the city could be in a position to be the recipient of and not have to pay for. So, it's things like that that could be extremely helpful to the city going forward. But yeah, I'm very much, I don't want to see the loss of all these trees. And just, just look out in the front lawn of City Hall. You know, we had some beautiful trees out there. It's really kind of depressing walking outside now, seeing that. But again, keeping your eye on the bigger picture, and I think just about all of you have alluded to it, no loss of life, no serious injuries. We will, we are going to replant the trees. We're going to get the city back to normal. And, but it's going to take a little time, you know? It's unrealistic to think, I mean, as good as I think the city looks right now, to get it back to where it was pre-July 28th, that's going to take some time. So, but the attitudes, and I think, again, almost all of you have pointed out the attitudes of our residents, it makes, it makes our job as elected officials in this city so much easier to, you know, to have our own residents be as optimistic and as easygoing as they have been with this whole, with this whole process. It's really been incredible to watch, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor Morabito. I have a whole little cheat sheet here so that I can thank a few people. But, Mr. Mayor, it goes without saying that you and your administration are to be commended. I was here, I think, 15 or 20 minutes after the storm hit and was with you that whole, pretty much that whole day. You know, I, I can't say enough about how professional everybody connected with the administration acted. Now, we come to expect from our emergency management team and Gene Dougherty professionalism, and, you know, his entire team, Captain Guido, his assistant director, and the other members. But every city employee stepped up to the plate, from the school department, city employees, everybody truly stepped up to the plate. There's one quick story I just want to tell. On my way down here from High Street, I saw the tree next to my house go down. And by the way, in tree documentation, I happened to watch the company come, I don't remember which company it was, that came to take my tree and put it in the chipper. But they document the tree, they take a picture, they put in where they are. So, all these tree removals should be documented, and they're going to get paid for what they did. So, I think that was, that impressed me, and I didn't even know that was the procedure, but I happened to see them doing that. I'm just assuming that is the procedure. But I was trying to make my way to City Hall, and I got down to Broadway, and of course, I couldn't drive down Broadway, so I went the wrong way on School Street. And a cop let me do that, so I think I was okay. I get to Mountain Ave, and there was a cop there, and he was trying to direct traffic. And there were, it was just devastation. Trees everywhere, power lines down everywhere. It was something I never even dreamed of seeing. So, I tried to go further so I could get down to Beach Street and then try to make my way to City Hall. And there was a downed power line, so I couldn't go much further. I had to turn around. But just as I was about to turn around, there's a guy walking up the street. And I just want to mention this, because a lot of private vendors stepped up with no recognition, didn't want to be recognized for what they did. And there's a guy, I looked familiar, and it turned out it was Mike Marullo, who owns Capital Waste. I says, "What are you doing, Michael?" He says, "I have a piece of equipment in the high school. I want to go and get it and help clean up." He had a bobcat with claws on it or whatever. Just, just to show how many people stepped up to the plate, when I was going home about 7:00 o'clock at night, who's in this bobcat at the corner of School Street and Broadway in Cushman? But Mike Marullo's still working all day long without any recognition, without looking for anything except to do the right thing. And there were lots of vendors that did that, and lots of citizens that stepped up. And this, this was the kind of stuff that makes you proud to be part of this city, the way the neighbors treated each other, the way everybody was just out to do the right thing. It truly, being part of this city government, I've never gotten more compliments than the last week of how good the city did in the midst of a crisis. And, you know, that makes the, the times when we don't get great, when we get a few complaints here and there, it makes it all worth it. But I just want to mention, obviously, Public Works, the public safety, the fire, the police, everybody was out there working, whether they were working on the clock or whatever. Everybody just jumped in and did what they could. And the utilities, National Grid and Verizon and Comcast, I mean, they were putting services on at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, once they got in. And the inspectional services department were out there, and the, you know, electrical inspectors and the ones that volunteered from other cities and towns to come in. They were out inspecting services so people could get their power on at 2:00 in the morning. This is stuff that nobody knows unless you were making calls, asking them to help you out with somebody's service. And it just, it goes on. The state delegation, Speaker Delia was here almost as quick as I was when the tornado hit, and all, the whole state delegation, Senator Petraselli and Representative Vincent, and the governor, who, you know, we don't agree on a lot of stuff, but he stepped up to the plate and got here to show his support and show that he cared. Just tremendous, but most importantly, the residents. And they showed what they're made of. They showed, you know, black, white, yellow, green. Didn't matter who you were, they're helping one another. And like you said, when the Red Cross makes a comment like that, they've never seen that anywhere before. We got to be proud to be part of this city. And so, again, all I can say to everybody, everybody involved, everybody in city government, all the citizens, all the vendors, just a big thank you. And especially to you, Mr. Mayor, and your administration.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I know you're, you know, you're going to go to a vote, but just some things that councils have said, it's going to be extremely brief. I want to, and I know he never looks for this, but I, I have to thank our emergency management director, our fire chief, Gene Dougherty. Just, he was tremendous to work side by side with over the last week. Nobody here expected this to ever happen in our city. We, you know, we're built for blizzards, heavy snowstorms, heavy rainfall, not tornadoes. And so, this was new ground for everybody, and it was terrific to work side by side with him and the whole emergency management team. Captain Guido, Paul Boudreau, Paul Simonini, you know, John Henry did a tremendous job in calming people down right after the storm hit. You know, we had doors and windows blowing out of City Hall. Nobody knew what was happening. He had a very calming effect. My whole finance team, I mean, as much as, you know, as mayor of the city, you've got to put finance aside and respond to the emergency. But at the end of the day, finances matter, and to have George Anzoni and our whole finance team on top of everything was just a tremendous asset for me, to not have that burden on me. They took that whole burden, so that was tremendous. And we have, as a city, as you all know, anybody that needs any work done, they obviously have to pull permits, because we want to be sure that, that everything is inspected when it's put back together and is safe for people to occupy. We've waived all the permit fees for any, any storm damage. We have agreed to pick up any debris or any tree limbs and branches that people can get out to the curbstone. If they can get that out to the curbstone, the city will pick that up all this week. So, we're allowing for that. And we continue with directed patrols, particularly in the neighborhoods where houses sustain the most damage, and, you know, we've got 15 uninhabitable buildings now. These directed patrols are going, you know, onto these properties. Naturally, they can't go inside, but they're going around the property and writing up reports, making sure that those properties are intact.
making sure that those properties are intact and obviously not subject to any looting. So, we continue, you know, our efforts, this, you know, this will continue, but people are still stepping up and doing what needs to be done to recover from the storm. And I want to thank all of you for your support in that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk.
Shall the City Council declare an emergency as outlined in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31, which allows cities to make emergency expenditures incurred in response to the tornado damage that occurred in July of 2014? Counselor Arigo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Reardon is absent, and Counsel President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the measure has been approved.
There seems to be no further business. We're adjourned until the 11th at 6:00 PM.